Okay, we're going to go and bring the meeting to order this evening. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, welcome everyone, friends, neighbors, people here in the room and people on YouTube. This is the regular City Commission meeting here at 6 o'clock, Monday, September 26, 2025. We'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Birch?
Present.
Brunick?
Here.
Sarda?
Here.
Conkling?
Here.
Hunhoff?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Mayor Villanueva?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
Thank you. And Item Number Two, under Routine Business, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th, 2025. And before you are those minutes, what's your pleasure, Commissioner?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? No mics, anyone from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, minutes are approved. Before you is a schedule of bills. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve the bills, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? No mics, anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Hunhoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye.
Motion passes, bills will be paid. Next, we will have the City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. First of all, I have an apology to make to Commissioner Hunhoff. At the last meeting, I made a comment on an amendment to a motion that you made, Commissioner Hunhoff, and it's not my place to comment or make, pass judgment on anything that the Commissioners make, say, or motions that you guys take. So, I apologize to you, and I like to eat my crow while it's still warm enough to swallow, so I hope you'll accept that apology. Also, want to bring forward to you, Commissioners, you have an opportunity, if you want to let me know, to serve on the 250th Celebration Committee. Todd Larson is working with a group of individuals who will be putting together, hopefully, a year-long scheduled events to celebrate our nation's 250th, so if any Commissioners are interested in serving on a committee, please let me know. Haven't heard back from any of you, all, any of you about the Kramer Kenyon Building, although some of you have sent me some ideas, and I think my recommendation is that we can give them some time to see if any of those ideas pan out. They're looking for some funds to restore their roof of their home and their carriage house, and looking to ask the city for some funds. So, what I recommend at this time is they vet out some of the grants and some of the things that we've suggested to them before we put that on the agenda, but just wanted to see if anybody had any other ideas right now, or if you wanted to wait a bit before we put that on the agenda. I think that's what we'll do for the time being. Also, been contacted by one of our medical cannabis sales folks, licensee holders, who are looking to change the hours outside of what we currently have. That's an ordinance change, and so I said, you know, if we need to do that, we would have to change that at the Commission level, you would have to change the ordinance. My staff, we don't have any reason why we would need to do that, but if you guys want to do that, they're looking to extend the hours until 10 o'clock. When they were set, we set them according to the same hours as our pharmacies. We thought that was logical, based on being it for medical purposes. So, do you want it on the agenda coming up? It would take, you know, a number of public hearing and all those types of things, or do you want to leave it as is?
Did you say there was no reasoning from the person that asked, or?
They just want to be open to additional, longer hours, and we, just as staff, didn't, that's what was our rationale for not making it later, being that it was medical, we matched the hours of our current pharmacies.
Okay.
So, you can let us know in the future if you want it on the...
Is it just one dispensary that's making the request?
Correct.
Okay, I guess we can let you know.
Thank you. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing no mics come on, I will take just a second here, so I was, I want to celebrate something that happened here in the community last week. I had the honor of cutting the ribbon at the Marshalls, New Marshalls Building at the mall store. It was a really wonderful morning, and one of the things I thought was really awesome, they put their best foot forward in a new community. They, Marshalls donated $10,000 to the River City Domestic Violence Center. I think that's a very wonderful way to start off a relationship and a new business in our city of Yankton. Also, I do want to say too that Diane Reese, also last week, donated 200 and pledged $250,000 to the Riverside Domestic Violence Center as well. So, what an amazing, what an amazing week for an amazing entity here in town that does a lot of good. So, I want to say thank you to everybody that is not just thinking about their own personal area, but also a community as a whole, and that takes a village, and we all, when we all pitch in, it's only going to make us better, so I really appreciate that. Okay. Next, now, Number Five, under Routine Business, we have public appearances. So, this is a time for anyone to address the City Commission for an item that is not on the agenda. No action will be taken on this item. You have approximately three minutes to speak, so if anybody would like to come up to the mic for an item that is not on the agenda, please do so now. Okay, seeing no movement in the room. Next, we'll go on to Item Two is Consent Items. Right now, we have no consent items to come before the Commission. Three, Old Business, we have no old business to come before the Commission. Now, we get into the meat and potatoes here. We have quite a bit under New Business. So, New Business, the first item under New Business is going to be the Health Insurance Committee Recommendation. So, this is Consideration of Memorandum Number 25-167, recommending that the City Commission approve the following recommendations submitted by the City of Yankton Health Insurance Committee with input from the City of Yankton Employees. First, renew with the same health insurance carrier, Avera Health Plans with a 5.5% increase. Avera will offer the same low deductible health plan, traditional coverage plan, and two high deductible health plans, health savings account plan for 2026. Renew the standard vision insurance core plan and buy-up plan at an increase from the 2025 plan. Switch to Sun Life Dental Insurance Plan at a decrease from the 2025 plan. Continue the Avera EAP Plan with no cost change for 2026. Continue with the city paying 100% of the single dental insurance plan, 100% of the single employee health insurance plan, as well as 100% of the premium for the $15,000 basic life insurance policy for each employee. And lastly, allocate additional time off to the wellness program as prizes. And tonight, we have, we're going to have a lot of explanation tonight in our packet here on our agenda. So, before I entertain a motion, I'm actually going to ask Brittany to come up and maybe do a little bit of explanation with some of these things, if you don't mind.
So, this process starts for us back in June. We work with Midwest Benefits. Dawn and Danielle are here representing them tonight. And what we do is we sit down in April, or in June, as a group, we are made up of, I'm a non-voting chair, we have three members from our AFSMI Union, we have three members from our FOP Union, and then we have three non-represented employees that sit on that committee. So, there's nine voting members on that committee. Those voting members, we ask, gather input from other employees within the City of Yankton, what was good, what was bad, what they did and didn't like from the current plan year. We meet with Midwest Benefits, and we kind of give them a whole rundown of what we're looking for. We ask them to investigate other options for us in funding, such as self-funding, fully-funded, we ask them to go get rates from other carriers. So, that typically takes six to eight weeks, maybe a little bit longer for them to gather that information. We meet back with Midwest Benefits and see the quotes typically early August, and that's when the committee really kind of dives in and decides what changes do we want to make, what makes, what's budgeted, where does that, what's allocated in the budget to cover those, investigate some other things, such as, in the past, we've looked at additional mental health resources, those types of things. And then, we ask, this year, we ask Midwest Benefits to go back and maybe do some more checking with carriers to see if we could get additional decreases in some coverage, and so then, then they come back, we meet with them for a third time, and then that's when our committee votes after we get those rates back. And what's presented to you in the packet, you see what the, kind of the final increases and decreases that came in from the companies that the committee narrowed it down and voted on based on what you guys see in your packet.
Okay, thank you, great explanation. Commissioners, any questions? No? Then I will, oh, yes.
The employee health insurance and other insurances in this package are all 100% paid by the city, and is that typical in the public sector and the private sector? There is usually a contribution by the employee towards their insurance.
So, the city covers 100% of just the employee. So, if you are covered as a single member, the city covers that at 100%. If you add a spouse or family, now that's a 50-50 split, so the employee does have to contribute to that. The difference would be dental coverage, we cover the same, for example, if the single coverage is $15, we pay $15 for every coverage, and then the employee has to pick up the rest. Same, similar with vision, we do the same, we cover a little bit of whatever the single coverage is towards the family and the spouse. The city does cover $15,000 life insurance policy at 100% for every employee, and then every employee has the option to purchase additional life insurance in $10,000 increments up to $500,000. That's at their expense for that additional supplemental life.
I appreciate that explanation. In the private sector, anyway, healthcare insurance, employees don't get 100% coverage, it's always a portion thereof, anyway. I'm just, was curious if that's typical in other cities where the employee portion is covered 100%?
Yes, similar. I would say if it's not 100%, they're covering 90%. In the discussions that we've have among HR Directors, that's what I'm seeing, is it's, you know, 90, 95, 100% of that employee-only cost is covered by the city.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner, go ahead. Oh, okay.
Move to approve.
All right, so, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Okay, any Commission discussion? Okay, seeing no mics come on, anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Mosher?
I'll abstain, my husband's a city employee.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunhoff?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, Item Number Two, under New Business, the 2024 Financial Audit Report, Consideration of Memorandum Number 25-179, recommending that the City Commission make a motion to approve the 2024 City of Yankton Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as presented by Williams and Company PC. Mr. Graham Forbes is up at the mic, and we'll go through our audit.
Perfect, thanks for having me. Can everybody hear me? I'll talk loud here. Yeah, thanks for having me. Again, I want to thank Lisa and her staff for helping us get all the information we need to, A, conduct the audit, and then B, assist in putting together these financial statements, it's a lot of time for her and her staff, and, you know, they have their normal day jobs they need to do, let alone work in, helping us get the audit done, and, you know, we ask a lot of them, and we really appreciate the effort they give us. So, I'll run through, you got a lot on the agenda tonight, I'll run through and hit, I guess, what I would consider a few of the high points, but please ask any questions or, you know, at any point throughout there, or when I'm done, it'd be great. The first thing I'm going to point out is on, and I think, yeah, it looks like most of you have a copy in front of you, on page one, it's our first page of our Independent Auditor's Report, and in the second section there, aptly named Basis for Our Opinions, you know, is where, you know, we say, under which rules we conducted our audit, and then in the first three paragraphs is where we state that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So, that's exactly what we're looking for, no modifications, disclaimers, adverse opinions, you know, and, you know, clean opinion is kind of the normal terms to unmodified report. So, good news there. I will point out quickly towards the bottom of the page there, the emphasis of matter, and there's more information in the report I won't dive into, but the city did adopt a new governmental accounting board standard in the way that they compute and account for estimated liabilities based on compensated absences that the city provides. And so, that's just a, not an elective, just the city was required to adopt this new standard based on this new standard that came into effect for the city's calendar 2024 year. So, there is some more information on that, but basically, the short story is it just requires for amounts that are not paid out upon separation or termination to still consider those for an estimated liability, excuse me, at any given year-end. So, again, just more of a compliance-type item than anything there, so. From there, starting at page four is the City Management Discussion Analysis, put together by city staff. I think that's good comparative information, where in this case, it's comparing 2023 information to the 2024 current information, and then some commentary by city staff on, you know, some of the changes that did occur between the years, what was the, some of the factors behind some of those changes, and a lot of good, you know, kind of where are we at compared to last year kind of information. So, if you're looking to kind of condense down and don't want to look through all 80-some pages, but have an idea where we're at, that MDNA or Management's Discussion Analysis is a great spot to start for that. So, from there, I'll jump into the financial statements again, I'm by no means going to hit on every of the 80-some pages here, but feel free to ask any questions you might have. You know, I think the first place I'll stop quick is on page 18. On page 18 is what's called the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for the Governmental Funds. Largely, the city financials are split into two sections, the governmental funds, which is your general fund, TID, Special Capital Improvement, and many of the smaller other different levy-type of funds, and then your business type or enterprise funds are your utilities, water, sewer, storm sewer, and things of that nature. So, this, on page 18, is your financials for the governmental side of the house, your governmental funds, and so you'll see there, towards the bottom, third of the page there, the net changes and fund balances. So, you know, kind of comparing it to, you know, a private, you know, finance statements, that's our increase or decrease for the year. And so, you could see the general fund, a very, very stable year, you know, on a $17 million of expenditures, the net change in fund balance was a small decrease of only $9,600. So, you know, very, very stable year there. You will see some bigger changes, for example, in the Special Capital Improvements Fund and TID Number 11, for example, but both very expected changes, you know, Special Capital Improvement, that's, you know, fund is a lot of timing where it'll accumulate tax dollars until a big project's underway, and then you'll see that, a big decrease in that fund. Likewise, TID Number 11, that's a early phases of that TID, and so it's a lot of expenditures going on, and then as property tax dollars become generated, you know, we'll see that flip the other direction and start to eat into that deficit. So, so some bigger changes there, but nothing that wasn't expected by city staff, so. Otherwise, there, nothing else, you know, big changes or anything unexpected on that front. From there, I'll flip back to page 22, which, as I briefly described there, is the Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position, this time for the proprietary funds are our business-type activities, which are our utility funds. There again, you know, towards the bottom third of the page is that net change and net position, which is our, you know, basically our net outcome for the year. You know, and there again, nothing that wasn't expected or budgeted for. You will see towards, a little farther down, the change in accounting principle, and that there again is the cumulative effect of implementing that new standard I referred to a few minutes ago, the GASB 101. So, that's what brought that about, not a correction of an error or anything like that, just putting in play this new standard that the GASB required to be implemented for 2024. From there, the notes, the financial start on page 26, I'm not going to dive into anything there, but there's lots and lots of detail on accounting policies, composition of capital assets, composition of outstanding debt, complete with maturity schedules and loan terms, and then lots of information on the city's various liabilities, which would be other post-employment benefit liabilities, compensated absences, the city's participation in the state pension plan, and many, many other things. So, if you're looking for lots of great detail, which I'm not going to get any deeper in this into, there's a lot of information in those notes. Starting on page 53, after the notes, is the required supplementary information. The only, the only schedule in that section I'm going to point out is on page 53, and I think this is good useful information, it's where the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, we take that schedule and then we compare it to what the final budgeted amounts were for the year, you know, and I feel like that's very useful to where we can see, okay, here's what we budgeted for, and here's what our actual amounts were, how did we do for the year? And I think that's a good measurement for, you know, financial performance and things like that, to see how the city did perform compared to those actual budgeted amounts. And you'll see, starting at 53, running through page 57, are the, that schedule for the general fund and the special, major special revenue funds, and then farther back, I believe it starts in a different exhibit, because they're not, they're supplementary information, starting on page 77 is the budget to actual schedule for every other fund of the city. So, I think that's really good information, too, and I know the city watches that closely, and is some valuable information there. I think the last item I will point out is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, which is on page 83. And that, that's just what it sounds like, it's a schedule of all the expenditures of federal dollars the city made in 2024. And as you'll see on the bottom of page 83, that was a little over $6 million spent in 2024. And that's a little bit larger amount, that number really fluctuates depending on, you know, grants the city receives, and if they're federally funded grants or not. So, there can be a lot of fluctuation there, but that's a little bit larger number than some years. And anytime that amount is greater than $750,000 in any one year, the city has to do what's called single audit testing on, depending on the number of dollars and the number of grants, one to several grants in any one year to test compliance with the numerous federal requirements that go with how the city spends those federal dollars. And so, since that number was greater than 750, the city did have to undergo some single audit testing for 2024 as well, but you'll see, there's a whole separate opinion starting on page 87 that discusses that single audit testing and the outcome of that testing, which was that there was no items to report, no non-compliance or internal control findings related to those federal expenditures. So, good news there as well. I know you guys have a long agenda, I've talked a lot here, but I'm going to quit, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or anything to point out that the Commission may have.
You know, thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay? Okay? Well, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, so now that we've heard the financial audit report, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any Commission discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunhoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next, Number Three, our Transportation Alternative Program Grant Application to Replace Pedestrian Bridge. Consideration of Memorandum Number 25-168, recommending that if a transport, if the Transportation Alternatives Program Funding Proposal is accepted for the replacement of the pedestrian bridge with east and west approaches, the City Commission passed Resolution Number 25-36, authorizing the City Manager to sign and submit the application, committing the city to an expenditure of $98,544.45. And before I take a motion, I'm going to have Todd, if you don't mind, come up and just do a quick explanation of what we're looking at again for the public, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just a reminder to everybody, thank you for signing the document, this is a public hearing that'll, those sheets will go in with our application to the state, because you have to do a public hearing for the grant, so this does serve as our public hearing. So, we're looking at replacing a pedestrian bridge that is between Walnut and Douglas. Again, it's about six feet wide, but there are some posts and some chain-link fence on both sides of it, so currently, it probably is less than six feet wide, more like five feet wide or what have you, but cement travelway, as I said, chain-link on the side, little bit of spalling and some things in the concrete on the top side, but the real concern is the wood structure below that goes into the creek, is starting to show some visible rot. You don't need to be an engineer, you can see that from visually now. So, we're looking at doing a TAP grant, obviously, because of the amount of funding that the state or the feds would provide on this. Again, our portion would only be 18.05%. So, we're doing the TAP grant, doesn't guarantee that we'll get it. If we don't get the TAP grant, then we'll look at, again, future years doing a TAP grant and monitoring the bridge to make sure public safety is always at the forefront of that, but we would not look to do this project without the grant funding.
Okay, thanks, Todd, for that explanation. I think it's really exciting, again, we're going to potentially spend, the city commit ourselves to $98,544.45 with a total estimated cost of $545,952.63. So, it's wonderful, I hope we get that grant, that would be wonderful, and let it be known, too, that there, I believe there was like 11 letters that came in to support this project.
Yes, and again, if those that follow government administration for the City of Yankton, they would know that we've applied and received TAP grant monies before. The last two projects that we've done specifically, in my memory, would be the trail slash sidewalk from the Walmart driveway heading west to West City Limits Road, and then we did a Phase Two, and again, that was, the state was good to work for us back then, because we actually applied kind of Phase One and Phase Two all at the same time, and got approval that, yes, do Phase One, and we will approve Phase Two, we still had to go through the entire process, but Phase Two was from then, West City Limits Road, Fox Run Gas Station, stopped there, down West City Limits Road to the Dog Park. So, those were the last two that we applied for and worked successful with, and again, indications are, I think will be, based on size of cities and the different categories they have, we should be looked on pretty favorably for this, but again, until everybody applies, you don't know.
Wonderful, that's exciting, and thank you to your staff, and you and your staff, for all the work you do to make, try and go for some of these funds to help make our city a better place to live. Appreciate that. And navigate. Commissioners, Commissioner Hunhoff, I see you have a question for Todd?
I thought you were going to ask for a motion, I was preparing.
Any questions for Todd before I, nope, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we authorize the City Manager to sign and submit the application for this grant funding.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Mosher will take yours. Fair enough? Okay, so, so I have a motion and a second. Any more Commission discussion? Seeing the lights come on, anyone from the public? No movement, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunhoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next, Number Four, Special Events Handbook Application and Fees Updates. This is Consideration of Memorandum Number 25-169, the recommendation from the Special Events Task Force and city staff. events task force and city staff that the city commission approved the proposed changes to the special events handbook, application, forms, and fees as outlined in resolution number 25-37 for events being held in 2026 and beyond. And again, before I entertain a motion, I'm going to ask Luke if you would hop up there with Todd, if you don't mind, and let's get an explanation first so we're all on the same page and have a good, robust discussion before we make a decision.
Yeah, so as the commission would be aware, back in time, we did not have a special events department after the city's 125th celebration that we had in Memorial Park and some other public Rib Fest events that they had prior to the current organizers. That had been downtown, it had moved up, up to Memorial Park. So through the years, we've gotten into the special events business. We run a few of our own. Couple of years ago, we looked at how people applied online, wasn't really an option at that point, it was all paperwork. We made some adjustments to fees, we looked at alcohol versus non-alcohol. So through the years, this has kind of been an ongoing morphing, change it as we need to. And so that got us to this summer. And again, we've done research with other communities and what they do around the state. Again, it's hard to say apples to apples or oranges to oranges because everything is different, every event's different, how cities handle stuff is different. But, so we formed a task force. And again, through the years, what we've seen now and what we discussed with this task force is event safety. We know around the nation, there's been different things that have happened. And then, of course, this spring, there was some with people driving into parades or special events going on in city public streets. And then we have business expansion going on downtown, changing of ownership. So again, we hear different comments and suggestions from those that are in the downtown area. Residential population obviously has increased in the Meridian District with not only the buildings that were there, but now they've built some new buildings. So we've got a bigger residential population in the Meridian District. And then all of that combined, new business, new citizens living in that area, we've got increased traffic volume. So we have those situations going on. And then from the years of doing this, and again, I don't think this comes as a surprise to anybody, we've heard the complaints from people downtown about the signs that have to be set out that say no parking, that get set out on Wednesdays or Thursdays for a Saturday event. And again, they're set out about every four, five, six parking stalls. So there's five or six per block, both sides. People don't understand, again, part of our ordinance was have a sign on them, have it say it's no parking for Saturday, June 10th, starting at 6:00 AM, finishing at whatever time, police numbers on there, this could be towing involved. And so again, on an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper, maybe a little bit bigger, again, people don't stop to read, so there's confusion about why these signs are up. We've heard those complaints. Through the years, we hear complaints about where we set prior to the event. We have to start, we, the city, park staff have to start moving picnic tables, garbage cans, things along those lines. And so we hear complaints from where we stable them, for use of a better word, where we set them on Thursday and Friday leading up to Saturday setup. So people are upset with where the picnic tables are at, where the no parking signs are at, where the garbage cans are at as we try to get everything down there. We have some of those things going on. Besides the fact of the businesses that are in certain blocks that have been closed, that have clientele that come in on Saturdays, we have some that have complained through the years about getting deliveries on Saturdays and then they can't. And so there's, there's been always that give and take of going on downtown. And so again, we called the task force together to look through all of that. Again, it does end up being a burden on the parks department, like for this year, Rib Fest was 32 labor hours, 32 plus labor hours by the time we, again, end up hauling stuff downtown, hauling it back come Monday. And again, doesn't seem like a whole lot in the grand scheme of things until you realize that we only have about 10 full-time staff dedicated to parks work. Again, we got people on trails and trees and flowers and doing everything else. But when it comes to parks, we only have about 10 full-time, and two of them are automatically going to be off on Friday based on our on-call work schedule the Saturday and Sunday before. And so because of the hours they're working there, they get off on Friday, so we don't incur overtime. And so it does end up putting a burden on us on those Fridays and even sometimes on Mondays when it's time to try to get stuff back. So a lot of different variables and things going on downtown that we've heard comments from. And so again, got the task force together and started talking through stuff. And some of the comments that the committee we talked about was, we know we've had success with events in Riverside Park, we've had success with events on the lawn space, we've had successful events up in Phantom Memorial Park. So is there a way to allow events to happen but not close down streets, specifically Third Street? Again, there was more discussion, Riverboat Days does close down Levy. So then, as a give and take, again, could we talk to events about having their events in our parks? Or if they really wanted it on a street, could we utilize Levy, which has a little bit less impact on businesses? Again, not using Levy all the way from the lawn down past the baseball stadium like Riverboat Days, don't think that, just a couple of blocks that we then really limit on, on businesses and residential, had some of those discussions. And so this is the recommendation that kind of came forward, was to look at not doing events on city streets other than Levy. Again, going back two years ago when we had the special events, we had already started to establish a parade route. And again, other than Riverboat Days, we've now really forced parades to use just the route that we have established and are trying to work towards what we call a moving parade. So you don't block off the entire parade route at 7:00 PM for an 8:00 PM tractor ride and then open everything back up at 9:00 when it's over. So there's a rolling part of that. But, so we've again, had these task forces, had these meetings, tried to talk through things, and this was the recommendation brought forward to see what the city commission thought. And again, it's more of asking the philosophical question of special events and where should they be? How much staff time should we utilize for those? And so that's kind of got us to this point, bringing this recommendation forward.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Anything you wanted to add to that at all? Should we, should we say who made up the task force, just so people, if they haven't seen the packet, then they know?
Yes, so the task force was made up of city commissioner Conkling, city commissioner Moser, city commissioner Spencer, city manager Leon, police sergeant McNich, police captain O'Farrell, myself, director of Parks and Recreation, Luke, who's our facilities and events superintendent, and then also Brandon Pavel, who's our recreation facilities and events maintenance coordinator. And again, when it comes to hands-on, again, Luke's involved with our special events and moving stuff. But sometimes when it comes to the labor part of it, really Brandon Pavel, the reason he was on there is him and his staff load picnic tables, load garbage cans, load, or at least haul down the trailers that have the traffic barricades on them, have the no parking signs, get things to where they need to be. They're also the ones that pick stuff back up on Mondays after events are over. So those were the ones that were on the task force.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to all those that do all that, all that work, it's really appreciated. Luke, did you have something you wanted to add?
I'll just add a quick note to this here. Just to summarize kind of my thoughts on this here, the memorandum that's before you tonight is really just our best attempt, effort to summarize the better part of two months of discussion that we had focusing on the areas of event, event safety, business expansion, residential development, and increased traffic flow. But beyond those considerations, we're also trying to be attentive to, to how special events can impact things such as staff time that we have to allocate for special events along with the lack of a formal notification process that essentially alerts businesses, residents, patrons, anyone in the impacted downtown area of special events. Again, right now, we're using an A-frame system with a fixed sign that has proved to be somewhat effective at times, but also very ineffective at times as well. When you couple that with the fact that Yankton does not have a formal downtown organization that helps us to co-manage all aspects of events, logistics, programs, and notifications, it does make it more difficult for us as a city to connect all the necessary parties involved in special events in our downtown area there. For record, comparative cities such as Brookings, Watertown, Mitchell, Aberdeen, Pier, and Sioux Falls, as a few do have dedicated downtown organizations that manage webpage, webpages that utilize bulk emails, that utilize social media pages, and provide downtown business members and patrons with weekly information regarding happenings. This does make it more difficult for a community like Yankton to provide much of the same information without the resources and staff dedicated to downtown organizations that we don't have in place here. Obviously, safety is one of the primary drivers in this discussion here. We do have infrastructure that we use for special events, but that infrastructure works in more of a notification fashion. You see it, it's there, but it doesn't really stop you from moving into any spaces or places. The barricades are temporary in nature, they can easily be moved from any location by simply picking them up and moving them. Event security has obviously become a point of emphasis for many municipalities, not just Yankton, as we have seen increases in intentional acts of violence along with non-intentional related to negligence, medical concerns, or even distracted driving in special event areas. One of the reasons we moved our own event, Music at the Meridian, to its current location in Riverside Park from the lawn, as the size and growth of that event expanded, the blocking of a through street to facilitate that event was not ideal. Hence was one of the factors in our own rationale to take that event from the lawn and move it to Riverside Park. That wasn't the only factor, but was one of our driving factors in that consideration there. Obviously, what I'm attempting to do in my job is to look at all these events impartially and manage all of the interests of organizers, attendees, private business residents, city staff, and the use of public spaces that are involved in this. We understand that this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We understand that any decision that's going to be made tonight is going to leave some happy and it's going to leave some unhappy. But the overall goal for us as a city is still to be inviting to special events in our community, to utilize spaces that we feel support special events in a safe, in as safe of a manner as possible, require minimal staff effort to facilitate those events, and allow for minimal traffic disruptions, and allow businesses to operate freely, and is mindful of growth and future development of places and spaces in our community. With that, we would turn it to you back for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry. So that we're not just working in this committee, obviously, there's a lot of businesses downtown. How are they all rolled into this question-answer input? That's, that's one, you know, the safety's a big thing, I get that. But if you have any type of a parade, you have the same issues, right? Anything like that could happen. Heaven for, hopefully it never does, but how did you roll in the businesses to get their input? Whoever wants to answer that.
Yeah. As we did in 2023, same as this year, we did not solicit any information from businesses downtown to actually feed into. The goal of this was to be as impartial as possible. We knew that potentially soliciting business information or individuals, we would, we would for sure get information that would relate one way to the topic and information that would relate the other way to the topic. Our hope was to, as impartially from a safety standpoint involving fire, police, city, public works, to try make our best attempt, effort at, at how do we, how do we utilize those spaces and places in the best manner? So no, we did not solicit input from any downtown business owners to speak into any of the plans of this.
And one of the things, too, I mean, that is why we have this meeting and that's why we have the public input. But I do see your, your point, Commissioner Sarda, that would be, of course, we always want feedback, we always want to know what, what our downtown's thinking. And one of the things, too, which would be very helpful, is if we did have a Meridian District Committee, that a collective could come together and have a good discussion about what is, what is best as a, as a downtown community for, for everyone as a whole. I know that would be extremely helpful. Maybe someday that'll get started back up, but I guess we'll, we'll see. Any other, yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
There were two other things that we considered. One was the burden on the police force. That was a big, a big consideration, all the extra overtime and things like that. The other thing was, they mentioned having to pick up tables and move them. To do that, they were driving through the parks with a vehicle and a trailer, could be some liability issues there. If this passes the way it's set up, they will no longer have to do that. They, hopefully will have some extra tables at their shop, and so they'll just go to the shop, pick them up. They won't be driving through the park trying to scavenge for picnic tables.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners?
And just on other events that are happening downtown, you know, I can think of the big ones that happen at night. Is there still a Harvest Halloween and events like that, those will no longer be held?
As far as I know, there is a Harvest Halloween, but I, I think they're having it in the parking lot now, if I'm not mistaken, and are they closing down the street? I, I don't know, I don't know that.
Yeah, Harvest Halloween actually moved their location from Third Street downtown to the lawn. Part of their rationale was, was based on the fact of wanting, from a, from a safety logistics standpoint, wanting to be off of Third Street in a, in a space that they deemed a little bit better for that type of event. So they are still hosting that event. It took place last year for the first time on the lawn adjacent to Levy Street, and it will be held again there this year.
Okay, great question. Commissioners, anything else? Okay, so again, I'm going to change things up just a bit. I am going to actually take public input first before I make, before I have a motion, this is why. I think it's important to hear from you first, that way if, if we hear all the input first, instead of either making a motion and making addendums to that motion, we can just hear the input and potentially just have a, one motion. So we'll, we'll take public input now at this time. Typically, before, I've asked to keep it to about three minutes. I realize that that might be kind of tough, and in the past, I've allowed people extra time. So I will let you come up to the mic and go ahead and let us know who you are, and then go ahead and let us hear you.
Hi, I'm Jeff DeHef. I think I know most of you. I have several businesses in the downtown area. I love Yankton, I want what's best from Yankton. And I realize that you're the elected, elected officials and you're going to make the decision on what's best from Yankton, and whatever you decide, I'm good with. I'm not going anywhere. I'm here for good, and my daughter's proof of that, she's taking everything over here. So I think the, the, one question I had, if we have it at Riverside Park versus downtown, is there, is there a difference in the amount of work for the city as far as how many picnic tables you have to move and everything?
Yes, if, if the event would be in Memorial Park or in Riverside Park, you would not have tables from any other location. There's more tables than usually what gets requested for events already in Phantom Memorial Park and.
So it'd just be moving around, okay. Yep, I understand that, that makes sense. I think I'll address the road closures. I think the road closures and events on Third Street are good for Yankton. The extra traffic that it creates brings many people to the downtown Yankton area where they can see new and existing businesses, and we're talking about the new businesses. And they actually have to walk past, and I've heard that from different businesses. Hey, I have a lot of traffic that actually understand that we're here. And if you're talking about antique mall or Rita's or actual shopping places, having people, that traffic helps them. I think it's very important for our local shops and businesses that are unique, that they need to get their, the word out. And we spend, anybody that has a business knows, we spend a lot of time and money trying to get people into your business, and we would love to have more people walking past your business. These events bring not only regular traffic, but they bring people from Vermillion, Sioux City, Sioux Falls, Norfolk, even groups and from Omaha and further. We have groups from Minnesota coming for Rock and Rumble. Yankton businesses are always trying to accomplish getting people from out of town. That also includes the lake area, and we're always trying to get people from the lake area into Yankton. And I talked to a lot of people from the lake that are camping, and they say, gosh, And I talked to a lot of people from the lake that are camping, and they say, God, you just don't get down to downtown Yankton very often. Not having these events will also impact the, tens of thousands of dollars that we have donated to local charities. River City Domestic Violence Center, Habitat for Humanity, Bridging Yankton, Suicide Awareness, CASA, Ability Building Services, Boys and Girls Club, and the Pink Ladies, and that's just from our charity events, the, the three big events. Rib Fest, Rock and Rumble, and Third on Third. And if I say Riverboat Days, we do that in the office all the time, so pardon me. We are donating from this year's somewhere between six and eight thousand, we have some pledges that haven't been paid yet, to the River City Domestic Violence Center. I think I shared that with you, Mike, when we went to the Diane Huether dedication the other day.
That's correct.
Safety concerns are, are another justification for the change in the downtown events policy. I don't think the safety concerns are any different than they have been in the last 10 years. And I, I could call on Sarah, or, or I've talked to Chief Foot, and I don't know how much extra that Sarah was our liaison this year for it, and to my knowledge that we haven't had any real problems. Minimal time trying to interface with them because we just haven't had a lot of problems down there. Now, is that, is the world different today than it was yesterday? Yes. There's no question about that, I mean, I'll admit that, but how far do we go as far as changing our policies that, that could hurt, in my opinion, downtown Yankton to address those potential returns? I don't want to try to.
Jeff, we're almost at five minutes now, finish your thought, please.
Oh geez, oh, sorry, okay. Alas, I'd like to say, I understand the task force that was started in May or June, and it's, and, and states that it has been working with some downtown business owners, I, I have not been contacted. The city contacted me about Rock and Rumble 10 years ago, and I've had Rock and Rumble and Rib Fest and Third on Third after, Rib Fest and Third on Third got abandoned, I took them over, and Rock and Rumble, we started, and Steph and I were on the first committee that was on it, and we've been taking that over. Thank you, I'm sorry I went over on my.
No, that's great, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else from the public want to come up? Please just state your name when you get up there.
Hi, so I'm Grant Kramer, I'm the Vice President of Lewis and Clark Abate. So, Abate stands for Brotherhood of Awareness, Training, and Education, and as far as road closures go, those help us a lot in doing our poker runs and our events. You know, it's a small road closure, it's not a giant one, but it's still a road closure, and not being able to have that road closure would greatly impact the people that would show up, because having that space for the motorcycles where it's, this is your space, it helps people feel more comfortable bringing out their bikes, being there, not having to worry about extra traffic and things like that. You know, we do a lot of, you know, we do two poker runs a year, they're both charities, they don't, get donated to other charities or individual people in the community who need help, and not being able to have those road closures, I think would greatly impact what we can do to continue helping the community. And I just wanted to thank you for your time, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, we have a question?
I have a question. Question, question for you. We were still talking about being able to close Levy Street, is that correct?
Yes, partially, portions of it, from the lawn to Douglas, Douglas.
Use your mic on, Todd. There we go, thanks.
No, it is not. Portions of Levy, not the, again, not the entire stretch from the lawn past the baseball stadium, which is Pearl. We talked about being able to close from the lawn, the alley on the west side of the lawn to Douglas, leaving Douglas open, so that provides for parking in the parking lot to the east of the water treatment plant. Also being able to close then from the east side of Douglas, not closing the Douglas intersection, but the east side going to, is it Cap, Capitol, which is by the, whichever businesses are in there. But anyway, again, not entire stretches, but smaller portions of it, so there would still be street access. Again, we also talked about being able to close the parking lot by the Capitol Building, so if you don't close Levy, we would allow closing the parking lot at the Capitol Building for events that need parking, such as that. We, and of course, we have the farmer's market that utilizes the parking lot on the corner of Second and, not, is it Douglas? Second and Douglas. There are some parking lots in the downtown area that could be utilized for events that need, again, specialized parking, to, again, not have to do the road closures. So yes, we talked about that.
How many blocks total could be closed off on Levy Street?
I think you're talking about either one full block or, again, without the intersection in, up to three blocks.
So it could be up to three blocks, but there'd be a space in between for Douglas, correct?
We wouldn't close the Douglas intersection because we don't want to block off the parking lot to the Capitol Building.
Okay.
So either Levy with no Capitol Building parking lot, or no Levy and the parking, Capitol Building parking lot.
And how is that in comparison to what we have currently? I'm, I'm, I'm asking, if, if we, if we do street closures now, how many blocks do we, do we shut down?
That was part of the ongoing discussions that happened this summer. We don't have a rule for how much.
But over the last couple of, over the last couple of years, how many blocks have we closed off for, for Rock and Rumble, for, for Rib Fest? How many, how many blocks, or, for, for, for your guys' event? How, how many blocks get, have been blocked off?
So normally, it's about one, it's about one block, normally from Boomers, half block? Okay, yeah, about half a block. So essentially from Boomers to, I think just past Cockatoo, yep, just roughly right there, that alley there, is about all that's blocked off. I guess for us, the main thing is we run our poker runs inside, you know, we always do like our, our drawings and, you know, our silent auctions and stuff like that, we always do them inside of a business. Normally it's Mojos, but, so not being able to have that there would severely impact us.
Because you wouldn't be adjacent to the, to the business?
Yes, because we wouldn't be adjacent to the business.
So it was not necessarily about having a block blocked off, as it has more to do with being adjacent to the business?
Yeah, being next to a business that supports us, support other organizations and people that need it.
Okay, but we could, we could still have an area blocked off for, for bikes, for safety of, of, of everyone having bikes, or they can use public space. I, I understand the argument, I'm just trying to, just trying to drill down on information. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a blessings of a bike, blessings of the bikes event in the past that have used the parking lot at the Capitol Building for a number of years, and now I think the last couple of years have used our parking lot by the Huether Family Aquatic Center for their bike event.
Commissioner Moser.
I think it would be helpful, and I don't have it with me, and I really shouldn't use my memory for this, so I'm going to ask you guys. I think it would be helpful for discussion, one of the things that I know weighed heavily on the Special Events Committee is people understanding how many events in a typical year go on downtown, and we're in, this is no surprise to anybody, we are in a state that has a winter. So when we talk about the number of events that are downtown, they're usually always, of course, in the weather that's nice, and I'll, I'll tease and then I'll let Luke, I see he's pulling that sheet, I feel like it was like 16 or 17, it's, it's more than you would think because of all the different types, so it's not just three large ones, or it's a number of small ones, and I think that's where a lot of that confusion comes in, and I know we talked about when they're on the committee, Luke, how many events, if you could kind of share that, because I think that's helpful to know too.
Yeah, and I'm glad I had this sheet in my folder here, that was timely. So we do facilitate a lot of events over the course of the year, and events do ebb and flow a little bit from year to year, but for comparison's sake, like the sheet that I had here, upwards of 17 events in, in the downtown area by the time we factor in all the poker runs, all of the parades, all the special events, Market at the Meridian events, our own city events, which, which we realize those are our own problems to deal with because they're ours, but we've, we've had, on average, probably between about 15 and 17 events in the downtown area over the course of a calendar year.
I'll make one more comment too, on the Levy Street. The reason why we talked about not going further than Capitol on Levy is because of the amount of baseball tournaments that happen at Riverside Baseball Stadium. So in our recommendation, you will see we specifically called out, we would not allow anybody to close the parking lot to the west of the baseball stadium, we wouldn't allow people to close the parking lot to the north of the softball stadium, and we wouldn't allow people to close the parking lot, which we call the Boat Ramp Parking Lot, which is south of the softball stadium. Again, anybody that's familiar with baseball, Commissioner Spencer could speak to that specifically because he's involved with the concession stand operations, it goes on every weekend all summer long. So again, because of traffic and understanding parking, and, and again, some of the things we're talking about, safety, that's why we weren't going to go any further east than Capitol when you started talking about closing Levy.
So I've probably said this, but there's no events that can happen on Third Street then, because I know like Riverboat Days, you said there, Grandfather Dan, which, okay, but like the 5K no longer, so Third Street won't be closed down except for Parade Lights, Riverboat Days.
Parades that we currently would have would be the city's Parade of Lights, Holiday Parade of Lights, Yankton High School Homecoming Parade, Mount Marty College Homecoming, sorry, Mount Marty University Homecoming Parade, and then the Old Iron Tractors Parade. Yankton High School's March to the Meridian Band Marching Contest.
I guess that's my heartache, is we're still not closing it down for everybody, and we didn't have businesses chime in, so that's just my two cents on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other, well, anyone else from the public, come on up and please just state your name?
Hi, my name's Chris Haas, just a resident in the city. Just got a couple of questions, that for me, it doesn't, doesn't appear the folks over there really understand the concept of a poker run. It's about raising money, helping, and it's about supporting the businesses that support the poker run. Have, trying to have a poker run down on the Levy Street, things like that, it just doesn't work. Then I would also question safety aspect. So shutting down a two-block with a block open and another block when you need three blocks, to me makes a little more unsafe, because you're still going to have traffic cutting through there, those type of things. The other question that kind of, that was brought up was the amount of police required for the events. If it was down elsewhere, how would that change? Still going to need the same amount of police force, those type of things, to do an event down there as it would be, so I'm just kind of questioning some of the logic with, with some of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public like to come up and give input? Okay, I'm seeing no movement. I will entertain, yes, yes, sorry, Commissioner.
I have one more question.
Yep.
And it's for Jeff. When it comes to Rock and Rumble, Third on Third, when you were talking about if it got moved, it sounded like these events aren't going to be able to happen anymore, and I don't take that as, well, I, you know, I'm not doing them if you move it, I take it as I don't have the manpower or I don't have certain resources. What is, what is your thought process there if it were to move to Riverside Park?
Rather than keep our outside things inside overnight and this move them outside to, to set them up, we would have to take them all the way down to the river, which would be kind of the same thing as, as moving the trash cans and the picnic tables and everything for, for the city. We'd have a lot longer to go. The other thing is, we have, we spend hundreds of hours of people that I actually pay during the year, because we don't have the volunteer committees that we used to have, where people will say, hey, I'll take care of the band, I'll take care of the vendors, we just don't have that, so I have to use my own employees to do that. Without the bump in sales that I get in the bars from the charity events, I don't, I don't see that I would be able to do it down at the river. The other thing we were talking about is if we have an event like a poker run down at the river, they're standing out there with nothing, I mean, are you going to set up a bar, are you going to have a food truck there, and I know poker, where poker runs are concerned. We set up in front of the Mojo's deck, and then the poker run takes off, and, and then they come back at 5 o'clock, so it's pretty dead in the meantime, but we're open anyway, so that, that kind of makes sense for us, where if I, we had volunteers and everything down at the river, that would make sense for us. Does that kind of answer your question? Okay. I wouldn't probably, I'd have to look at it, take a hard look at it, but I probably wouldn't have those three events if I had to have them down at the river.
While you're up there, Jeff, any more questions for, for Jeff?
I do have one, Jeff, sorry to, sorry to be the late ad. Well, that's important too, I think. For Rib Fest, that's been ongoing downtown for many years, since I moved back to Yankton anyway. Would that work in Riverside Park?
It could, but again, with O'Malley's being right there, without that bump in sales, I'd, I'd have to take a look, a look at it, because Rib Fest was, I mean, pretty close to a break even this year. By the time you pay the bands and sponsorships are getting kind of harder and harder, and I've never asked the city from Rib Fest, Third on Third, or Rock and Rumble, all the years that we've done them, I've never asked the city, obviously the city supports me, but I've never asked for any monetary compensation or any kind of donation from the city for any of those. So, I'm not saying an absolute no, but the, probably I wouldn't be interested in doing them down there.
Okay, yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to get up there. So, so as we worked on this, I just want the rest of the commission and for our visitors, you know, we looked at Riverside Park as the rising star, if you will, of Yankton, I mean, it really is so beautiful down there, and just from a family event, things we were talking about, Jeff was like, like this year, we came down, it was really hot, in the middle of the day, it was really sunny. And again, we're limited what we have for facilities outside the, right in that immediate downtown area, and we kind of used the idea, as this little committee is like, we looked at Music at the Meridian from the, what do you call that, Todd, the green space, or the green lawn?
The lawn.
The lawn, and they moved the events to Riverside Park, and the, the last one was at July 31, Luke, around there, and the turnout was tremendous, I mean, just, and, and just the park facility and families and playground and the river and the beauty of it, just like, what a great space to hold events. And I guess I would encourage you, if, if we do go down this path, to look at that, just, because I think you might get more business there than just right there, maybe not the bike rallies or the poker runs, but the other food events, just a great place to hold an event, and it, so, and, and then in respect with the other businesses downtown, would it be a win-win for everybody? I think that's how we looked at it, and so that's, that's kind of what, kind of we came up with that conclusion, like, we just have a designated spot for events like that to be outside down by the river. So just wanted to explain some of the reasoning we had behind that, and, and some ideas that generated from our. from our meetings.
Commissioner Moser?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Spencer. And I think the other thing that would add on, and part of why I asked the question about the number of events, is that's the problem. When you have 15 to 17 different events that potentially close the roads in downtown Yankton, it makes it extremely difficult for businesses to know what's going on, or, hey, is this a weekend I have, you know, I'm not going to have access to my business for deliveries, for other things like that. And we didn't want to say one event is more important than the other for exactly the reasons that you all stated tonight. Every event has an important aspect to that. And so it's extremely difficult to say, well, this one we should keep because it means more than this one, or this one gets more people, or this one raises more money, this one doesn't. You know, all of it went in the culmination. Now, having said that, you know, one of the questions I got was, well, why does Riverboat Days get grandfathered in? And, you know, why isn't there some discussion on them following the rules, what makes them special? You know, again, not picking on Riverboat Days, I think we all love Riverboat Days, we all love a lot of the events that take place in our community. One of the reasons I think it was easy for us to do that is the size of the event, and the amount of community it takes up. And, you know, no secret, the Riverboat Days gets hundreds of thousands of visitors to that event. But it's also on a designated weekend. So we could go in, and folks that are in the downtown business, I'll use my own kids, and they're going to be mortified when I say this, so I'll hear about it. Just know Mama Moser's going to be in trouble. But eventually, one day, I'm hoping my kids get married, right? I'm sorry, this is not supposed to be a dialogue, but I know, because Riverboat Days is the third weekend in August, we would never do it the third weekend in August. You won't find facilities. Like, everybody knows, in the community, in the region, I talked to, you know, I got family out in Rapid City, and they're like, ooh, we're coming back the third weekend in August. They don't even have to look at a calendar, they know what's happening. So that's part of the problem. And I guess my long diatribe into that is, how many of these events, I think a lot of them have flexible dates, and that's the problem for the downtown businesses, is they can't plan accordingly. I could maybe steer a delivery at a different date or time, because I know that weekend, I mean, I can guarantee there's probably not a lot of downtown businesses that have a delivery during Riverboat Days. They're not going to even try it. So maybe more for Jeff. Jeff, you mentioned three events. It's pretty obvious, Third on Third, that that's a no-brainer. It's always the 3rd of July, right? Like, that's why it's called that. But do you have, and I'm curious, because I don't remember it coming up in our community discussion, or our committee discussion, do you have, like, you can stand up here and go, Ribfest is always this weekend, it never changes. I could tell you in 2030, if Ribfest stays as it is, it's going to be this weekend, and the same with Rock and Rumble, or do those fluctuate?
Ribfest has always been, to my knowledge, and I don't know when it went up to the park or went out to the NFAA, but it has, it will be the second Saturday of June. Approximately three weeks later, we have Third on Third, and I can't remember the, no, that's on July 3. That's three weeks later. And then three weeks after that is Rock and Rumble. So that's the three events that we have the control over right now. It has been that way ever since, for 10 years for Rock and Rumble. Now, that's my fault if I hadn't made that clear to everybody. But that has been the date and will be the date. Does that answer your question?
I believe so.
Okay.
Counting three weeks, and then counting three weeks, and then counting three weeks doesn't help me as much as knowing, like, Riverboat Days is always the third weekend in August. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, and again, I served on the committee, so just trying to wrap my head around, you know, I know Ribfest has been around for, like, 20 years, I think, because I remember the World Youth Archery, we had a little spot in Memorial Park blocked off when we had youth archers there. Again, it's an event that the community's been very familiar with for 20 years. You know, again, like I'm saying, if you're sitting here saying, it'll always be the last weekend in June, no matter what, I'm just curious on that. Because that's, like I said, part of the reason we grandfathered in, Riverboat Days, is everybody knows it's that weekend versus, well, it might be this weekend this year, and it might be the two weeks later next year. There's no moving.
It never has been, and it won't be as long as we control it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I've got one last thing, and that was, we brought up Memorial Park. I saw that in the packet. Todd, could you speak to that? The possibility of Memorial Park being used for events?
Yeah, going back, again, when we had the 125th and the success of that event, and then Ribfest, when there were other downtown business owners or employees of businesses downtown involved in the Ribfest before Jeff's iteration of it. It was downtown. It did move dates. Started out in September, and moved to different weekends in September. And then they tried beginning in June, and then it moved back into June a little bit. But again, going back in time, we had the 125th, and it was very successful up in Memorial Park. And then the city paid to have some infrastructure put in, which we've used for events in the park, kids in the park on the Saturday mornings when we did those, again, whatever events that we would sponsor in Memorial Park. But there is infrastructure for electric. So starting where the south bathroom building is, along that middle trail, heading to the monument to the veterans in the middle of the park, there are electric panels on both sides of the path, east and west. Then you have, when you get to the monument, there is the trail that comes in from the west, where the, obviously, everybody knows is the row of flags. We have infrastructure, electric, north of that, also in that green section. And again, those electrical, both 110, 220s, were put in to house events and bigger events. So again, Ribfest, the first year with Hairball, that had thousands upon thousands upon thousands of people there. And then the second iteration of Hairball, which again, was the weather event, which kind of caused that event to stumble and go away. So yes, Memorial Park's got the, a couple of different things there. A little bit closer, so people can walk, ride bikes, get dropped off a little bit easier, closer to homes. But we also have parking all around the park, both on-street, off-street, pull-in parking. And again, in times, we've also talked with the middle school, the school district, about using the parking lot behind the middle school, which gives you a lot of parking right in a close proximity to the green space that you would use for an event.
Okay, thank you. Got two mics on. Yes, Commissioner, go ahead. Okay, nothing yet. Okay, so I just want to remind everybody, this is the public, I move the public discussion up first, so we could have this discussion and have this knowledge before we actually make a motion. So this is the public discussion portion. If you have anything you need to say, you need to say it now. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion, now that we've had a motion and a second?
I would add, Commissioner Brunick, we did discuss Memorial Park in our discussions with the committee. We kept gravitating back to the river, just because of the, again, the shining star we had there for the facility, and the proximity to downtown businesses. I'm sure you get quite a bit of business, the downtown businesses from Riverboat Days, people were walking by. It's not a terrible walk, a couple of blocks or so, right down the street. Also, again, another reason why we landed it, trying to get more events at the river, and hopefully, an attempt to keep everybody happy and to keep the visitor business coming to Yankton, because I think that's so important. There's no question about that. And we want, tried to keep that in mind. So if this does go through, I would encourage your business, Jeff, to continue to look at, that is an alternative site. The bike riders and the poker runs, if there's a way to figure that out, I don't know what it would be, but there's a lot of good brains in this town to figure those things out. And just, it was intended to try to make it a positive experience.
I would echo that, too. Obviously, tourism is extremely important for our city, and the last thing we want to do is stifle tourism. But again, no matter what happens, again, we're all neighbors, and we can all work together. This is, will not be an easy decision, I'm sure. But just like I said, if whatever happens, we can work together, for sure.
Okay. Any other commission discussion? Roll call.
Birch?
Nay.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
No.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
No.
Moser? Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
No.
Mayor Villanueva?
Okay, I'm going to, having been on the Riverboat Days Committee, I'm going to abstain from this vote. I see that I can do that, because it has been decided. So I'll abstain.
That's correct. Fails 5-4, and 1-5-3, and 1 abstain.
Okay.
So, Mike, can we look at possibly some type of amended motion now?
We sure can.
So I would like to propose making a motion of approving everything outside of the Third Street road closures, or outside of the downtown road closures, with the thought process that that will be reevaluated. I do think that, sorry, now I'm going on a tangent, but I do think that that should be evaluated. We should not just be closing it down 17 times a year. But I don't know that I want to completely take that off the, off the books, off the table, thank you. And so at this point, I'd like to approve everything else that was in that document, because there were a lot of great things, and reevaluate that one item and bring it back.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay, so please just reiterate that, reiterate that motion, so it's clear.
Yes, okay. I would like to make a motion to approve every item in the document, other than the downtown road closures, and have that set for a reevaluation.
Okay. And do you second that, Commissioner?
I still second.
Microphone?
I still second that one, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the motion as stated? Yes?
I just want to make sure, for Luke and Todd, and for staff's benefit, that we all understand, Commissioner Benson, what your motion is, is that we'll continue to close down the street for any and all events requested?
My idea is that we're going to reevaluate that one item, because I do think that there probably should be some rules and limitations. I just don't think that we should not move forward with the rest of the document as it is written, because I think there's a lot of important pieces in there that weren't defined before.
Yeah, certainly. And until that time, we'll continue to close down the street for any and all requested events.
Until it comes back to the table.
Okay.
And just for clarification, when do we expect it to come back to the table? I think that would be a good timeline, too. Commissioner Moser?
No, that was going to be my question. Not that I have to justify why I voted no, but I've rethought a few things, and a few of them, I think we need to reevaluate just a couple of the events that I wanted to take another look at, that maybe didn't cross my mind when we were talking about it in the committee. So I, too, was going to ask that question. And then my follow-up question would be, yes, when are we going to meet? Because I do know folks are planning 2026 events. And Luke, I can't remember, in our committee meeting, this is effective for 2026, right? And we started those communications, right? So I worry a little bit about, I don't want to drag our feet, because if folks are planning 2026 events that are larger for our community, I don't want them to plan it, and then we come back and say, oh, well, now we voted, you can't close Third. So I feel like it's got to be an expedited timeline that we have that discussion.
Agreed.
I guess was going to be my point, and why I voted no, is because I want to evaluate just a couple of events.
Yep, agreed. City Manager Leon, what would you consider a good timeline on this to be for that to happen, so we're not holding things up?
I would say we either need to do it right away, or we need to evaluate the events this year and come back next year.
Todd, do you have any input on that?
So, yeah, so I guess we would move, we would move forward with the status quo for 2026, and we're now talking about what we're going to try to do if we do anything for 2027.
Does it have to be that way? Are we at a point where we think we could reconvene within, I mean, have something to bring back within the next month or two to have a decision made for January?
So again, think of 4th of July events, we're booking acts come end of December, end of January. So we're now, again, there maybe are a little bit more local acts, so maybe not quite as far out. But again, watching the scene and some of the bands that they've had, it might be a six-month, eight-month, year out, too. I would have to talk to the events to know that.
City Attorney Denher, did you have something?
Something to point out, the, whenever we do a road closure, if we want no parking with enforcement assistance from the police department, each one of those events comes before this commission for review and approval. I understand that these are, when they're hosting events and they're bringing in and booking bands, they have to plan quite a ways ahead. So I think maybe one of the strategies to consider is suggesting, making those requests far earlier, so that people can know well in advance, this commission can weigh in on those decisions before it's too late to change booking and ruin the event.
That makes sense. Commissioner, go ahead.
I don't think there's any secrets. The dates have already been given to us by Mr. Dayhoff, what he wants for 2026. I think we, we don't address it today, we address it a year from now. So I'll leave everything in place for 2026, for the events.
Okay. So Commissioner Benson, you made the motion, and is that which, is that, making sure that's what you mean to say in that motion? So everything is...
My biggest thing is that we reevaluate the street closures. And so if the timeframe, if there's a variance of how everybody sees that, whether it happens next month or it happens in 2027, that is what it is. But I wanted to make sure the rest of it got evaluated and moved forward, if possible, if that's the flavor.
Okay. So your motion is to, again, approve everything in the agenda item minus the street closures, correct? Commissioner, you good with that? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Moser?
Sorry, I just need to clarify. So we would just be removing the street closure part of that. That doesn't then require another, like, meeting or anything. We can do that tonight, that change, without having to bring it forward in another meeting?
It's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, perfect. I just wanted to clarify that if that's decided tonight, there's, like, we don't have to do it again at the next meeting, because folks obviously are making plans.
So then if we do this, then when are we coming, we're going to come back next year, then? Is that what we're saying?
That's how I understand it. We'll probably do it a little earlier in the year, earlier in the fall than September, probably, close to the end of, I would say, event season, probably start of school time. I'll visit with the Parks and Special Events staff on that.
Okay. Commissioner Benson, are you good with that, since you made the motion?
I wanted to make sure. My biggest thing is that we're not pushing all of it to the side at this point. So I would like to evaluate the other sooner than later, but that's my personal preference.
Okay. And your motion is not contain a timeline, which is okay, but I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page. Okay, okay.
I've got...
Yes, Commissioner?
I agree with the year timeline. I think it's going to be somewhat complicated to make sure that this is fair for everyone in the downtown. So I would be in agreement. I don't think this is something that we're going to be able to bang out in a month. I think it's, we're going to have to evaluate this, we're going to have to look at all the different sides of it, and try to come up with some type of compromise that'll work for everyone.
Okay. Lisa, would you reread the motion that you have recorded, please?
Yes, Mayor. Motion by Commissioner Benson, seconded by Commissioner Birch, to accept all proposals in the document and fee resolution, with the exception that downtown road closures and events are reevaluated. And then I have a side note, in the future for the 2027 event season.
Commissioners, is that, is that correct? Commissioner Benson, are you good with that? Commissioner Benson, are you good with that? Okay, just double checking. Ross, you have something?
Just a point of clarification, this is a question for, for Todd and Luke. Is there anything, the way this motion is stated, that, that causes conflict with other portions? Because I categorically removing a chunk from a policy that's in draft form, I can understand how that can cause unintended consequences in the verbiage. I just wanted to make sure we're not going to have any issues there.
So, again, in here, it says no road closures of state highways. That isn't city of Yankton policy. That is, if somebody wanted to close a state highway, they have to go to the state, not us. So that wouldn't change. I'm assuming we're saying road closures can happen for poker runs. So Third Street slash poker run road closures can now happen. It doesn't affect city parking lots. Parades, we were already trying to designate to parade routes, so that's just reinforcing what we were already doing. Yes, and so I guess part of this was the A-frame notification goes away. So we have other ways that we had talked about in here of notifying the public not utilizing A-frames. Is that still okay to not utilize A-frames?
I think you have to have them, wouldn't you, still?
Well, you put in place quite a few other notification processes in this document.
I think it changes the whole, whole document that we created, because it was all based off of things being at Riverside Park. Will the fees need to be different? Because now you're going to have a lot more traffic and delivering things again. The way we set up the road closure signs were based on shutting Levy Street down, so we would use several big ones as opposed to the A-frames. So do we need to reevaluate the whole document?
Luke, do you have something to add?
I would say, in, in part, so some of the information you see in here about, about the notification process was based on a thought of this, this proposal as a whole. If we didn't have Third Street closed down for sections, is there an alternative way to notify for other? So it, it probably does beg the question of, I think we now go, kind of go back to the drawing board of, how do we effectively notify? We know Third Street is problematic, and we know the 15 to 17 events we have, as the input from PD was, we, we don't like the morning phone calls of, there's cars down here that need to be towed, there's people in Airbnb that need to be towed, there's somebody left their car down here from Bart needs to be towed. So we do need to probably reevaluate how we want to proceed to find an effective notification system. Does it involve A-frames? Possibly still involves A-frames and possibly still includes some of the other items that we had noted in here, but I, I think, as Commissioner Conkling was talking about, it probably does maybe require a little more conversation if we do move forward with the status quo, just to make sure. We want to alleviate some of the problems we've had in the past. I think the status quo is, I don't think we want to continue with the problems of the past either, so we maybe want to have some future discussion with that.
Okay, so that's important, what we, what you just talked about. So evidently, I can make a motion with priority.
Or entertain.
Or entertain, and this is why. So, so I think it might be wise to maybe, maybe revisit this entire document a month from now. That way, everything that we are talking about can be, all, all the, the logistics can be worked out appropriately as opposed to trying to figure that out right now under duress. Is that, is that fair? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to make, I'm going, I'm going to make that motion to, to simplify things, and I guess I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
Should we entertain discussion with, like, Mr. Dayhoff and other-
Since, since it changed, we're, we're going to go back through the process, correct? I think that's important. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I've got a quick thing. So are we going to, we're going to go through the whole document? We're going to go through all of this, including whether or not to close down Third Street? And we're going to, and we're going to come back in a month's time?
Yes, that, that's what I'm, that is what I'm saying. Is that-
Excuse me, Your Honor, why don't you just table the motion?
That's what it is, laying it on the table for a month, come back at a definitive time.
Thank you. Okay, so then we'll table the motion for a month. Thank you, I appreciate that. So we'll, we'll table the motion for a month, and we have, so the, the, the motion then is to table, to table the, the original motion, and we'll revisit it in a month. Okay, so that, that's, that is the motion. So do I have a second on that motion? Thank you. So motion to table, I have a motion and a second. Any more commission discussion? Seeing, yes, Commissioner Moser?
Been patient.
You have been, thank you.
No, I just want to clarify, because I know this now leaves people with events for 2026 kind of dangling out there, because this was to basically impact 2026 events. So I just want to publicly say, be aware, this still puts 2026 events a little bit on hold because we don't have now a policy in place for them to move forward with planning on having an event on Third Street, correct?
Correct, that's true.
I just wanted to say that publicly, that people understand, you don't leave here tonight, start booking your bands, start putting posters up that have events taking place downtown because that has not been resolved.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. And one of the things, too, I want to say is that I think it's important for everyone downtown to, to have robust discussions with each other, to make sure, again, that collaboration, cooperation, communication goes a very long way. So we all know that, that we're, we're doing what, what is in the best interest of, of the Meridian District and, and the community. Okay, so any more commission discussion? Public discussion? Yes, come up to the mic, please. State your name.
Josh Blum. My question would be if the downtown businesses could have any input in this as it proceeds in the next two weeks or week before. If there would be a way to, who would we reach out to?
That is a great question. Would you entertain, Todd, would you entertain having discussions with businesses downtown?
Yeah, no, I think at this point, we would, again, we've defined what the Meridian District is, so we would get a list of businesses and send out a short survey, again, not getting into the details, but saying, do you support closing Third Street to have special events in your district? Yes, no, and then we'll, we'll have it.
I think Thrive can help us with that, Todd.
Again, we don't know what the percentage of surveys will get back. National average 25% or less, whatever that would be, but anyway, so that, but yes, we can do a survey, so.
And I think that's a good idea, because probably what I heard tonight was, it sounded like maybe some were, were not in favor because there wasn't a lot of public input. And so I think that adds that portion to, to this, to this agenda item. Okay, so any more commission discussion? Yes, Commissioner Brunick?
So, survey, but is there someone directly that, that Mr. Blum could, could speak to?
Do you speak to Todd?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so anyone else from the public? Jeff, go ahead.
A little confused. So it got voted on and then voted down, and then it's getting voted, it's, now it's getting tabled to the next-
We're tabling, we're tabling for a month.
Okay, all right.
That, that is what's, we're voting on.
So I don't want to proceed with anything, I mean, that can't be reversed.
You can't, right, right. We're, we're tabling for a month, we're going to table for a month, which is what I should have done originally. Thank you, Charlie. That would have made this all much easier, so I'll, I'll, I'll own that for sure. But, but we're going to table it for a month to have some, to do the survey. We'll define the, the logistics and parameters of the Meridian District. Please talk to Todd, give some input if you have some, and then we'll revisit this in a month on the 27th, is that correct? October 27th. Okay, clear as mud, everybody? Okay, so we've, we've already had commission discussion, public discussion, any more public discussion? Okay, roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Okay, I will still abstain. That motion passes. Okay, thanks for getting through that, everybody, sorry about that. Okay, number five, the Summit Activities Center rate adjustments. Consideration of memorandum number 25-170 recommending that the city commission implement the proposed rate structure as outlined in resolution number 25-38 for January 1, 2026. And Todd, while you're up there, I'll have you explain that just a little bit, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so going back in time, again, through the years, we've done rate increases, rate adjustments at the Summit Activities Center. We had the committee, the task force that met with the Summit Activities Center and talked about different ways of increasing attendance, increasing attendance, memberships, market, how we market, you know, looking at it from a business standpoint. So our last rate adjustment was, went into effect January 1 of 2024. And so we've seen the attendance increase, we've seen our membership numbers increase over the course of 2024 and 2025, but obviously, everybody knows that expenses have gone up also during that time, and it doesn't look like they'll be going down anytime in the near future. So this is just a standard business, we need to adjust our rates. We looked at two different things. One, in-town rates of Anytime Fitness and Great Life. And with this proposal, we would still, our rates would still fall underneath or cheaper than their rates here in town. But then we also did a, an examination of what other facilities across the state are doing or are at currently in 2025. Again, always going to say this, not apples to apples and oranges to oranges, because every community and every fitness facility and every, what they're doing and what they have and how they do it and when they do it is never the same. The, the one interesting thing, though, that I will say about doing the examination across the state is, the last time we did this in 2023, Spearfish was working on resident versus a non-resident rate, and now that has gone away in their facility. So that was interesting to see. Otherwise, fitness-wise, memberships, or I should say, facilities and community rec centers that we examine, there's never been a resident versus non-resident rate. So that was the one interesting thing to point out there. But no, this is just normal business practices. Again, we haven't adjusted since 2024, so we would look to adjust and start this January 1 of 2026. And again, that gives us the opportunity to not only inform our membership, but then those that do have annual memberships would have the ability to buy one year in advance so they could get 2026, wherever that would end, in for a 2025, current 2025 rate. So we would not let them buy multiple years. That used to happen, we've gotten rid of that, that's a policy. They can get one, one year out in advance. So again, people could lock in at the 2025 rates for 2026 into 2027, when that annual membership would end for them wherever they are currently.
So the moral of the story is, by now, they make great Christmas presents, maybe anything in between, to lock in for 2026?
Yes.
At a 2025 rate?
Yes.
What a deal. Thank you. Okay.
Just wanted to offer a comment.
Yes.
You know, that, these are still the lowest rates in town, and I like to say lowest rates in town for the best gym in town, and definitely the best family gym in town. So it's, it's reasonable. Wanted to repeat what I said at the park board meeting last week and, you know, thank Todd and Luke and all the city staff for the work they've done to improve the facility. As you heard Luke say at a recent meeting, we hit 90,000 attendance last year. We're on pace to break that and finish even higher than that this year. So I just wanted to thank them for those efforts, and I'll make a motion to approve the rate increase.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, but I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commission, any more commission discussion? Yes?
And looking at all the, the numbers that are presented here, with the exception of a million, everyone else offers a senior citizen discount rate, whatever. I'm not asking for myself, but Brian Hanoff just turned 66 yesterday. So I was just curious if that had been any part of the discussion.
So Amy has heard me say this before. We were in the golf business, and the thing I learned about golf, when you start giving stuff away, it's hard to ever give it back. And then, again, for what we give away, in lost revenue, we got to make up somewhere. And all of a sudden, that ball starts rolling downhill. So again, if you remember back in time, we used to have corporate rates 50 and above, we had corporate rates 50 and employees and below. We had military, we had seniors, we've had children, we've had couples, we've had single moms, we've had, you name it, we had it. We had a list that took up three pages. It got complicated, COVID came through, we went to, everybody just needs an individual membership. Again, going back to the task force, that was the mission statement, provide everyone with an affordable indoor family-friendly fitness and recreation facility. So in the discussions, I have, no. We looked at keeping the rate structure exactly as we have it for individuals and not getting into, again, whether it's senior, military, again, grandparents with grandkids that they're raising in their house and families, again, defining couples, defining families. We just are trying to stay away from that.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Any more commission discussion? Yes?
Yeah, one question, Todd. The resident, non-resident question is interesting. Do you have any idea what we have for non-residents of the city at the membership of the summit?
No, we'd have, we'd have to, we can, in our software, track addresses, but we would, we'd have to do that to start to figure out.
Yeah, I was just curious and just if it would be a revenue stream. I've always wondered about that with city services and the amount of population we have that sit, that live outside the city limits, taking advantage of those great services. So, I don't know, maybe something to consider in the future, but just a comment.
Okay, yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for adding that hip sled. It's been a very popular addition.
Any more commission discussion or comments? Okay, seeing no mics pop on, anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next, number six on the agenda, the Huthur Family Aquatic Center rate adjustment. Consideration of memorandum number 25-171 recommending that the city commission adopt the Huthur Family Aquatic Center 2026, 2026 rates as proposed and established in resolution number 25-39. Instead of getting an explanation, I'll ask, is there anything that we should know that is any different than as before we vote?
Again, singing out of the same hymnal, probably. Just data-wise, things to know, what we're learning is, which we knew before, but it just is emphasized, weather is everything in the summer. And when we get 98 and 100 degrees days, we're going to have crowds over 1,000, and the parking lot's going to be full, and they're parked on Douglas. But this year, we had our best year ever for postseason water walking, so that number was up. Again, attendance, overall attendance for the year was up over last year. So again, we kind of dipped a little bit, and now we're coming back up. Revenue-wise, at the front desk, again, was up this year. Our concessions are down. And again, looking at what the world is doing with food, we're probably going to have to make some adjustments on concessions prices for next year. And so, not sure where that number will end up, because again, as we raise prices, you sell- sell less, so you lose what you sold, what you don't sell, so I don't know if we're kind of chasing our tail there, but we will have to raise just because of the expenses. Total daily passes were up this year, but again, we continue to bleed a little bit on the total season pass number. And again, part of that is, we do still have the Guppy Grant in place, we still work with the Boys and Girls Club to get access to youth into the facility. But again, through time, we talked about those that can't afford, how else can we get them access, especially thinking about parents that want to come and grandparents with their, in whatever relation, with their kids, cousins, nieces, nephews. So we do have a night rate for those that show up after 5 o'clock, which is a little bit cheaper than the normal day rate if you came at 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon, because obviously, the time you can spend there is less. And then we do have the family nights that we started on Wednesday nights. And again, we've seen good attendance at those, and that's a cheaper rate yet. So we've tried to, if people can't afford a season pass, figure out ways to get them into the facility without hurting their pocketbook. The other two programs to talk about are, they can check out, not limited to what you can check out, but families can go to our library and check out passes to come to the Huthur Family Aquatic Center, and it's good for two adults and up to six kids for one of those passes that they check out. And then we also do the same thing with utility billing, when someone comes up, comes in and signs in for a new account, we give them passes to both the Summit Activity Center and the Huthur Family Aquatic Center. Because again, as was alluded in our earlier discussions, not only do we want them to look at your front door, you want to get them inside the facility. And we, again, think if we can get them in the Summit Activity Center, if we can get them in the Huthur Family Aquatic Center, they'll see what a value it is, and we're trying to turn those into memberships. So that's the whole goal of those programs. So, just so everybody's aware, last thing to mention is, and those, this won't probably come as a surprise, our best weekend ever over Riverboat Days weekend. So our numbers there over those three days, when you add them up, it was our best weekend ever. And again, we've had weekend, Riverboat Weekend days where we'll have only 100 people, and then 200 and 300, not very many. And this year, we're pushing 600, 700, and 300. So again...
Wonderful.
With the weather we had, it was cold, it was rainy, I was worried, but it ended up being a good year for us.
And before, I just want to, one quick comment, I want to give a shout out to all the staff of the Huthur Aquatics Center. What a wonderful thing, and I know that they put in a lot of work, a lot of part-time staff, put in a lot of hours, and thank you all for making that such a huge success.
Yeah, it's amazing when you think about high school kids running that kind of facility. Again, we have adults that are in there and out, but high school kids and college kids. And this year, we had more trouble with adults maybe than we had with kids at times.
That happens.
Not workers.
Right, right.
Those attending our facilities. Sometimes adults are worse than the kids anymore, which is a sad state.
Yep. Well, thanks for that explanation, I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I would like to make a motion to approve the rates as presented. I'd also like to point out that summer passes at $75 a price, that's about 80 cents a day. And, you know, what a great bargain that is, and the staff is to be commended for all they do up there.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second. All right, we have, any more commission discussion? Yes.
Just one thing to point out, I don't think anybody mentioned it, so I don't want it to get lost to the millions that are listening to our meeting tonight. Same deal like the summit, the Huthur Family Aquatic Center, the passes can be bought this year yet at 2025 prices for 2026. I did not hear anybody say that, I just want to clarify for the public, it's the same deal at the Huthur Family Aquatic Center, and do they go to the summit to get those as they would have in the past?
That's correct, and you'll see in every door direct mailer, that's going to make its way to every 5708 zip code, that will have information about the summit rates and the Huthur rates, and the fact that they're a great Christmas gift, so go buy them.
Yes, they are. Thank you, Commissioner Mosher. Okay, so any more commissioner, commission discussion? Anyone in the public? Okay, roll call.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number seven, fireworks public display requests, consideration of memorandum number 25-172 requesting a public fireworks display on December 4, 2025. The fireworks will be launched from the top level of the Meridian Bridge, coinciding with the Holiday Festival of Lights, tree lighting. I don't think there's a whole lot to explain on this one, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number eight, introduction, this is an introduction, first reading to establish date for a public hearing for the proposed amendments to tree ordinance. Consideration of memorandum number 25-173 recommending that the city commission review the proposed amendments to the City Yankton Tree Ordinance and set October 14, 2025 as the date for a second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. Do I have an introduction?
So introduced.
Okay, introduced. Okay, number nine, 2025 Yankton Road Tax Resolution of Necessity, consideration of memorandum number 25-174 recommending that the city commission adopt resolution of necessity number 25-40, which establishes the Yankton Road Tax Assessment Rate for 2025. And I don't know, Lisa, do you have anything to add on to this?
I have nothing to add, Mayor Villanueva, this is pretty standard operations that we do every year. I believe it's been 50 cents per front foot since 2014, I believe, so we have not made a change in the rate.
All right, then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Seeing no mics, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number eight, introduction, this is an introduction, first reading to establish date for a public hearing for the proposed amendments to tree ordinance. Consideration of memorandum number 25-173 recommending that the city commission review the proposed amendments to the City Yankton Tree Ordinance and set October 14, 2025 as the date for a second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. Do I have an introduction?
So introduced.
Okay, introduced. Okay, number nine, 2025 Yankton Road Tax Resolution of Necessity, consideration of memorandum number 25-174 recommending that the city commission adopt resolution of necessity number 25-40, which establishes the Yankton Road Tax Assessment Rate for 2025. And I don't know, Lisa, do you have anything to add on to this?
I have nothing to add, Mayor Villanueva, this is pretty standard operations that we do every year. I believe it's been 50 cents per front foot since 2014, I believe, so we have not made a change in the rate.
All right, then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Seeing no mics, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number eight, introduction, this is an introduction, first reading to establish date for a public hearing for the proposed amendments to tree ordinance. Consideration of memorandum number 25-173 recommending that the city commission review the proposed amendments to the City Yankton Tree Ordinance and set October 14, 2025 as the date for a second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. Do I have an introduction?
So introduced.
Okay, introduced. Okay, number nine, 2025 Yankton Road Tax Resolution of Necessity, consideration of memorandum number 25-174 recommending that the city commission adopt resolution of necessity number 25-40, which establishes the Yankton Road Tax Assessment Rate for 2025. And I don't know, Lisa, do you have anything to add on to this?
I have nothing to add, Mayor Villanueva, this is pretty standard operations that we do every year. I believe it's been 50 cents per front foot since 2014, I believe, so we have not made a change in the rate.
All right, then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Seeing no mics, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, item number 10, water consumption rate adjustment, consideration of memorandum number 25-175 recommending that the city commission adopt resolution number 25-41, increasing the water consumption rate by 3% effective November 1, 2025, and further making no adjustments to the surcharge at this time. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, commission discussion?
I wanted to ask, and maybe this was covered at our budget workshop, and I forgot the answer, but, so we're increasing all three of these 3% tonight, which I think is what we did last year, is that going to be kind of the new norm, or is that just happened to be a coincidence that we did it that way two years in a row?
Good question. Lisa?
I believe 3% was something we talked about during the budget process, just to try to mitigate some of our loss. There is a handout regarding factors to consider regarding what we look at when, or look at utility rates. This year has been a very abnormal year, our consumption is down 33%. We've never been this low, went back to 2008, and we still have never been this low. So it really shows the impact of having a wet year. Also, it shows the impact of American Foods no longer being full operational. As far as what we can do next year, that's hard to determine, I think we kind of budget to zero based on what we expect for operations. The consumption is mainly for the operational and personnel side of it, usually the surcharges is where we get for the capital projects. We do pay for some of our capital projects out of the consumption. That, I'd have to take a piece-by-piece detail. But, you know, another thing, too, is the revenue, if you look at our budget, we anticipated an increase of revenue of about $94,000 for the water fund. Based on year-to-date actuals, we're down over $440,000 in revenue. So, again, you know, that's part of just starting a budget process early, we started in April, we tried getting documents out and stamped by July, so it's a little difficult on that end. Do we want to raise rates 3% every year? No, we don't, but this is an unusual year, and I, now that we are kind of more into the data, we should almost go more than 3%. Honestly, we're down 25% in revenue, but that's not the recommendation as proposed.
Did you have another question, Commissioner?
Well, right, I know, like, two years ago, we raised, I believe we really raised the garbage 10%, or, excuse me, yeah, it was 10%, wasn't it, two years ago? And so that was because of some special circumstances, and I understand the ones you just described with the water, the impact on the water revenue. But I guess I had a constituent ask me, so did, I realize what we're trying to do here is meet our costs, and he said, so did all three of them, all three of the costs go up 3%, or are we just picking that number to use as kind of a new multiplier?
I would say, based on the data we had, we thought 3% was doable, based on operational requirements, and also on financial strength. So I don't know if City Manager Leon has more to add to that, but that's just something we thought was reasonable for the budget process.
I don't have anything to add, other than if we would have used what we know now, we would have probably recommended something actually higher. I don't remember what we did two years ago, but I know there were a couple of years where we didn't raise rates because we didn't need the, we didn't need the, we were, we didn't need the revenue, and I don't believe in raising rates if we don't need the revenue, I don't think we should be a bank in our water and sewer fund or solid waste. But if we're down in revenue, I think we do need to have the revenue to operate and to also cover our capital costs as well. So it is an estimate, yes. It's not exact, it's not exact math, but what we did there was, based on what we knew at the time, and what we thought our expenses would be, also, I don't think we fully knew the extent of what losing American Foods would do to our water and sewer, and that's really taken a hit for us as well. So we'll be better at estimating as we go on as well, and maybe next year, we won't need to raise rates. If we don't, maybe we'll have a really dry winter, and people will use a lot of water, I don't know, but maybe we won't need to, but we'll just have to see what happens.
Commissioner Conkling, thanks for your patience, do you have something?
Yeah, I'm going to object to all three of these. Two weeks ago, you gave away $460,000 of the taxpayers' hard-earned money, and now you're turning around and telling them you've got to pay more. I think that's unethical. I think the amount of money that's going to be raised by these adjustments is about 200,000, which is less than half of what we gave away last meeting. So I think it's unethical to raise, if we're going to give away money, then it's unethical to raise the rates on the citizens.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead.
I would just say, you know, Bill, Commissioner Conkling is making the point, and that we always have to keep in mind the many citizens who are living paycheck to paycheck, and although this might not seem like much of a monthly increase to a lot of people, to some, it's huge. And I did want to ask one more thing, if in the future, it would be possible to make these decisions prior to approving the budget, because as I understand it, this revenue is already calculated into our 2026 budget, which we approved last meeting, and if there's, maybe there's a timing factor there that I don't know about, but otherwise, I would like to make this decision each year prior to the official approval of the budget. Thank you.
Anything to add to that, Lisa?
No, I think I understand what you're saying, and we can definitely take a look at that next year during the budgeting process. That's one thing, being in the new position I am, let's take a look at those opportunities and see what we can do.
That sounds good. Okay, so do we have a motion then? Oh, that was, sorry, that was discussion, my bad. So I have, that was our commission discussion, anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no movement, roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Item number 11, wastewater incremental rate adjustment, consideration of memorandum number 25-176 recommending that the commission adopt resolution number 25-42, increasing the wastewater incremental rates by 3% effective November 1, 2025, and further making no additional adjustments to the surcharge at this time. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any commission discussion?
I have another request, if it's not too much, I'd like that next time we make these decisions prior to next year, next year's rate increase decisions, I'd like to see a kind of a comparison done of how our water, sewer, and garbage rates compare to the 10 biggest cities in the state. Are we the highest, lowest, in-between? I'd be interested to have that prior to this decision next year. Thank you.
Yep. Any other commission discussion? Lisa, go ahead.[1750.13]
Sioux Falls has got to spend a fortune on theirs. And so, I mean, it's, you need to know, we're now doing wastewater treatment. Okay, where are they with their wastewater treatment plants also? I mean, that's, that's a part of that discussion.
That is a good point. Thank you, Charlie. Okay, anyone else in the public? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Nay.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Item number 12, solid waste collection rate adjustment. Consideration of memorandum number 25-177, recommending that the City Commission adopt Resolution number 25-43, increasing the solid waste garbage collection rates by 3% effective with utility bills rendered after November 1st, 2025. Do I have, what's your pleasure, commission?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commission discussion? Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just add that conversation from the two previous, obviously, 3% is on the table. But I think as a group, as commissioners and staff, we need to remember this at budget time. I don't want us to forget about this because I think if we have to raise them again, is there somewhere else out of the budget we can? I think administration's done a good job of balancing the budget this year. But if there's a place we can find home for this, out of somewhere else, if we got to keep doing it, because the projections don't sound very good for the demand of water. And we'll see what the weather's like, and American Foods isn't coming back anytime soon. So how do we account for that? I just, I just want to make that a point, that we, that we do keep this in mind at budget time next year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more commission discussion? Okay, seeing no mics, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Nay.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, number 13, adoption of city credit card policy. Consideration of memorandum number 25-178, recommending that the City Commission approve Resolution number 25-44 to adopt the City of Yankton Credit Card Acquisition and User Policy per SDCL 4-3-27. Before I ask for a motion, Lisa, is there anything that we need to add to this?
I don't think so, Mayor. This is something that we're just trying to make state law happy.
Okay.
A little bit of cleanup. We haven't been working outside the guidelines listed in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Seeing no mics, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number 14, surplus vehicles and equipment. Consideration of memorandum number 25-180, recommending that the City Commission adopt Resolution number 25-45 and authorize disposal, trade, donation, or sale of surplus property by online auction. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Seeing none, anyone from the public? Roll call.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Number 15, engineering services proposal for the 8th and Burley Street intersection improvements. Consideration of memorandum number 25-181, recommending that the City Commission approve the engineering services proposal for 8th Street and Burley Streets intersection improvements with Banner Associates, Inc. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Commission, any discussion? Would you like him to? Okay, Adam, would you mind coming up and giving us a little explanation, please?
Was it on? South Dakota DOT and the BNSF Railroad contacted the city about a year ago about upgrades to the, the signals and the crossing surface at 8th and Burley. If you pay attention at that intersection, their signals are outdated. They're very close to the, to the curb lines. They're subject to being hit. They, they probably don't meet BNSF's current standards for visibility from the roadway. So they're, they're looking at upgrading the signals and the crossing surface at that location. With that, we'd like to do, obviously, intersection improvements. And with that, utility improvements with the, the water and the sanitary sewer. So we'd like to work with Banner to, to help with the engineering for that project and working with BNSF and the DOT.
Okay. Commission, any further discussion?
And that was in the capital plan for?
2027.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, public, any discussion? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, thanks for hanging in there, everybody.